Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any changes or additions to this evening's agenda?
Yes, your honor, I'd like to give a ragby report talking about some street closures.
Good, absolutely.
Yep.
So we'll add a ragby report to our committee reports. Anything else? It will move to our consent agenda and council, there's one item that we're going to pull out of the consent agenda and consider separately. Immediately following that would be the approval of outdoor service for Shokai from July 26th, '27. So in the consent agenda, we'll have approval of minutes from the July 8th meeting, a resolution of employment for Park and Rec Department, approval of liquor licenses for Torino's and George's Steakhouse, and approval of claims in the amount of $197,607.59.
Okay, and then Julie could give a report on the two liquor license.
Yes, Julie, would you talk about the background checks on both Torino's and George's for any violation, any...
We don't have any violations.
No violations there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Move for approval.
Move by Revulinski to approve.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Okay. Counsel, now we'll move on to our public appearances and I'm going to invite Rebecca Johnson, our librarian, to talk about a special recognition for Beverly Olson, who cannot be with us here this evening, but Rebecca, she'll tell us what we do. Yeah?
Beverly Olson served the maximum 12-year stint on the library board from the years 2001 through June 30 of this year. Bev is a remarkable lady in that she had to come across town in a wheelchair to do this, and she was a really conscientious board member. She was a member of Friends of the Library. In fact, she was president of Friends of the Library for years prior to that. So she's been a really stellar supporter of the library. We're going to acknowledge her with a beautiful plaque and a bouquet of flowers. I'll be visiting her in her home tomorrow for that.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Counsel, I will ask to give a motion of appreciation and recognition for the years of service for Beverly Olson.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Thank you, Rebecca. Next, counsel, we move on to our resolutions and action items. And you'll see, number one is naming of the Central Park gazebo bandstand. Ron Prill, who has been the director of the band and the Tuesday night municipal band concerts for many, many years, will be retiring at the end of this year. And it was actually brought up by several of his band members that the city consider naming the gazebo or some part of the gazebo after Ron for all of his dedicated service over the years. And this was checked with our Park and Recreation Department, and I know many of you received an email from Kevin as well about this. Certainly, you know, this is our quintessential summertime activity, very, very important to the community, and a very dedicated group of musicians under Ron's direction who've done this for many years. So we're recommending that we do name essentially the inside of the gazebo, the bandstand, for Ron Prill in memory of all of the great work that he's done. There are two band concerts remaining, so we're hoping to make a formal presentation a week from Tuesday. So entertain a motion then approving the naming of the Central Park gazebo bandstand after musical director Ron Prill.
I would definitely move that we do just that in honor of Ron.
Great, thanks, Martha. Moved by Rasmussen.
Okay.
Second by Boyer. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we have two agenda items regarding the wastewater Phase 1, both facility contract and conveyance contract. And Kevin, we're going to table those items for this evening?
Yes, if we could, your honor. We had to push the date of our meeting up just a little bit late, and we thought we would hold on to this for another couple of weeks and have those on our first agenda in August.
Okay, so we will table those items on the agenda. Move to setting a public hearing for the annexation of properties owned by Pilot Grove Savings Bank and Lausdeau LLC. And that would be, Kevin, and that's essentially for annexation of property that is part of this designated TIF district that we have already approved.
It is indeed, your honor. This is the 75 acres there across from the Highway 1 TIF district that we've been working on, across from the hospital. And so this will be that front piece owned by Pilot Grove Savings Bank, soon to start a construction project there, hopefully. So this is an essential piece of what we're working on there in the TIF district.
Right, and we certainly welcome that being annexed part of the city's boundaries.
We do indeed.
So we're just simply setting a public hearing this evening for our next meeting, Monday, August 12th. Entertain a motion to set the public hearing for the annexation.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we have two agenda items regarding the wastewater Phase 1, both facility contract and conveyance contract. And Kevin, we're going to table those items for this evening?
Yes, if we could, your honor. We had to push the date of our meeting up just a little bit late, and we thought we would hold on to this for another couple of weeks and have those on our first agenda in August.
Okay, so we will table those items on the agenda. Move to setting a public hearing for the annexation of properties owned by Pilot Grove Savings Bank and Lausdeau LLC. And that would be, Kevin, and that's essentially for annexation of property that is part of this designated TIF district that we have already approved.
It is indeed, your honor. This is the 75 acres there across from the Highway 1 TIF district that we've been working on, across from the hospital. And so this will be that front piece owned by Pilot Grove Savings Bank, soon to start a construction project there, hopefully. So this is an essential piece of what we're working on there in the TIF district.
Right, and we certainly welcome that being annexed part of the city's boundaries.
We do indeed.
So we're just simply setting a public hearing this evening for our next meeting, Monday, August 12th. Entertain a motion to set the public hearing for the annexation.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Thank you. Next, we have approval of drawing specifications in form for contract for the 2013 street resurfacing project. Are we going to have a presentation on that, Melanie?
If not.
Please, yeah.
Kevin, do you happen to have the copy that was left with City Hall?
I do have it in my office.
Okay, because I'm extremely embarrassed that I do not have the engineer's estimate with me.
Let me grab that.
I'll blame it on the pregnancy ring. This project is something that the Streets Department had budgeted. It is for resurfacing or adding a layer of hot mix asphalt on Maple Street from Harrison to Madison, and then Harrison from Maple to Highland. The project also includes a mill/patch job done in front of the Country Club. There's a kind of a speed bump there that we're going to smooth that out, as well as a four-inch patch of H-May near the West Hy-Vee entrance. And we're opening bids August 1st for your consideration on August 13th. This is the engineering agreement.
Did I get the wrong thing?
Yes.
So you're engineer...
The engineer's estimate...
That's okay.
Okay.
I don't copy the estimate, that's all I have.
Okay.
That's fine.
I know it's over 100.
Is it on my desk?
It's something like 131,000 for the engineer's estimate for the project.
It's only going to be relevant once we have bids open, so...
Exactly.
Don't worry about it. That's okay.
I thought I was getting the contract, my bad.
My bad for not bringing it. So that's all I have about the project.
All right, so Tuesday, August 13th, you'll be opening bids, and then they'll be reported at our second meeting in August 26th?
No, the bids will be open August 1st.
August 1st, okay.
For consideration at your first meeting.
So they will be at our next meeting, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Melanie.
We need action.
So we need, yes, we need action to approve the drawing specifications in form for the contract.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Revulinski. Any other discussion?
I would like to make one comment. Our city forces have been down there and doing patching on that street.
I've seen it.
Full-depth PC patching prior to this project, and I think that's went really well. That was typically something that we would have let for private contract before, but the city saves money by doing that type of preparation work prior to doing a project like this. So our overall cost for doing this resurfacing is actually lowered because of it.
Thanks, Aaron. Yeah, I noticed that as well. There was a lot of work, a lot of patching work that went on there. It looks very good, and that corner is pretty nasty where it's low, so that's something we're looking forward to having.
Are we adjusting the manholes, too, then? After they're done?
They'll be adjusted by the thickness of the overlay, and that'll probably be done by the contractor after it's done as part of the contract.
Okay.
So we have a motion, second...
I didn't know if we were doing that work ourselves or not. I know we'll have to do it, I just didn't know.
Yeah, it will be done. It'll probably be a PC patch out, and the overlay's probably, what, an inch and a half? Two inches, yeah. And that sounds fairly typical.
Right.
For that age of pavement.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Not all those in favor signify by calling the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, you also have next on your agenda a request from Fairfield Volunteer Center of $2,008 in additional lost funds. Apparently, that request has been withdrawn.
Yeah, we can table this, your honor. The...
Is it a table or a withdrawal?
I would say that right now it's a tabling, maybe for further discussion, but the prior 2,000, the 4,200 we allotted for Volunteer Center in our budget, as well as the 2,000 we also are putting out there today, or we did in the bills, were passed previous to the end of the fiscal year. So they're cleared already, and this was for another amount for this year. Of course, we're discussing it now with Volunteer Center. It may not be necessary, so...
Okay, because of other recent funds that they received. Okay, so we'll table this item, should it need to come back to us. Okay, next, counsel, we have an action which would be awarding our 2013 CIPP sanitary sewer lining project. Do we have bids on those to review?
Actually, the bids have been reviewed and...
Is that...
No? Oh, okay. Yeah, I was informed that who was needing to review them had reviewed them.
They have reviewed them. The bid we had was the only bid that we got, and the other bids we had were late. The only other bid we got was late. Sean was not able to be here tonight. He had to... I don't know if he gave you...
Ask you.
Did he give you the bid, the copy of the bid?
It's on the link.
Yeah, I was just looking for it.
Yeah, it's the lower 119. One.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, ninety-one, ninety-seven.
So did we have an estimate on that?
We didn't have an estimate. We went out for bids on the package.
Just went out for bid on the package.
And this is the only bid that came back on time. The other bid was about three days late, so...
The lower bids, the ones that came on time?
Yes, the other bid was 126,000.
So we received two bids, Vizu Sewer, for 119,186.75, which is disqualified because it was received late, and then a bid from Municipal Pipe Tool Company of 91,978.50.
Yes.
And that is a qualifying bid, so are you making a recommendation to counsel to award that bid?
Yes, to Municipal Pipe and Tool.
Entertain a motion then to accept the bid.
Move to accept bid from Municipal Pipe and Tool Company.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kaelin. Yes, go ahead, John.
Usually on these, some engineer goes over the bid and makes sure that somehow they can fulfill what they said. Are we doing that on this, or not?
This was done internally out of our sewer budget, and Sean went through and came up with the package of what the work was. Again, as we've been doing lately with our new, you know, email method, we're doing listserv. We send out an email that has the scope of the project, so everyone's bidding on apples and apples, and the bids are supposed to be back at a certain time. Of course, Sean's working with Melanie on all this stuff along the way, you know, coming out with what the scope of the work is and...
So, I mean, somehow we vetted this company?
Oh, yes. We've been working with them.
We have, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, we've done sewer lining previously with both of these companies.
Good, yeah.
We're looking at over, a little over a half mile of eight-inch sewer that we're going to line this time with this project, and then some shorter pieces of 10-inch and 12-inch sewer. And then there's some lateral work that's included in this estimate as well. Laterals are lines that come from properties or from businesses into the main sewer that's out in the street. This is a process where they blow a lining down through the existing pipe that's still salvageable. It won't need to be reconstructed or dug up and reinstalled. And then they cap each end off and they blow steam through it. It makes the material rigid on the inside. It really doesn't decrease the thickness of the walls on the pipe to change the hydrology that's designed into the pipe. So these are some of the typical projects we've been doing with funds that we've gotten from increased sewer revenues through rate increases that we did a year and a half, almost two years ago.
But all the companies that bid are bidding over scope and specification, so...
Right.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Thank you. Joy?
Each and every year, a city street financial report is required by the DOT, and if you do not fill it out, all it really is is confirming that we've received all the road use tax money, and then I report all the expenditures. And the way I found out that you have to do it is if you don't, they withhold your money. And so when I got it this year, I jumped right on it, so... Yeah, it's just, I just need approval, and it's real simple. I just, the roadway maintenance, it's broken down into snow and ice removal, engineering, street and bridge construction, traffic services, administration, and equipment. And then I confirm that we did receive 906,328 in road use tax dollars.
Why haven't we been required to file this in the past?
Oh, we did.
I mean, I don't recall seeing this coming before us as...
I think it was called a road use tax report, to be truthful, and then they've changed it to a city street financial report. So, yeah, it's every year, it's due, so...
Move for approval?
Thank you.
Moved by Revulinski, second by Boyer to approve the city street financial report for the expenditure of the road use tax funds. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Thank you. Joy?
Each and every year, a city street financial report is required by the DOT, and if you do not fill it out, all it really is is confirming that we've received all the road use tax money, and then I report all the expenditures. And the way I found out that you have to do it is if you don't, they withhold your money. And so when I got it this year, I jumped right on it, so... Yeah, it's just, I just need approval, and it's real simple. I just, the roadway maintenance, it's broken down into snow and ice removal, engineering, street and bridge construction, traffic services, administration, and equipment. And then I confirm that we did receive 906,328 in road use tax dollars.
Why haven't we been required to file this in the past?
Oh, we did.
I mean, I don't recall seeing this coming before us as...
I think it was called a road use tax report, to be truthful, and then they've changed it to a city street financial report. So, yeah, it's every year, it's due, so...
Move for approval?
Thank you.
Moved by Revulinski, second by Boyer to approve the city street financial report for the expenditure of the road use tax funds. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we'll move to the second reading of the ordinance to rezone 809 West Taylor.
Is there one other item?
You know what, I apologize. I've usually had my computer out here the last couple of weeks, and the battery's low, and it's a little bit bigger screen, and I'm reading, I'm back on the iPad, and I'm missing stuff. So I apologize. Okay, we have a resolution providing for the reduction of interest rate on the water revenue bond. Kevin, if you could give us some background on that.
This would be the SRF move to lower interest rates for governments pretty much across the board. It would be about a $275,000 savings for the city over the term of the note, so this is appreciable savings for us.
Term of the note is how long at this point?
I would say 10 years. Around 10 years, yeah.
So it's about 20,000, a little over a year that we're going to save?
Yep, around 25, $6,000 a year.
And they say they're reducing it from 3% to 1.75, is that right?
Right.
Yeah, SRF's quite well vested at this point right now. A lot of actors out there, low interest rates, everybody's getting into the fixing business.
I would move to approve the resolution.
I would second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen, and yes, obviously, any time we get an opportunity to do this, particularly in this low interest rate environment, we should take advantage of it, so I think this is good, given all of the additional responsibilities we're going to have coming up. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we'll move to our second reading of the ordinance rezoning, 809 West Taylor. Before we open up the public hearing, any comments from the council? I know everyone was urged to actually physically visit the property at the last meeting, and anyone who had not had a chance to do that, okay?
Yeah, John and I went and saw it on Friday that week, I think. And we got a tour of the outside, a tour of the inside, visited with John Cooster about his plans, and kind of got a better feel for the property and everything, and it seems like, from our conversations, that he has a pretty decent plan in place, and it also seems that he's maybe listened to some of the residents in the area and taken into consideration and maybe changed some things as a result from his original plan, so... I don't know, I thought it was a, seemed like a pretty decent project, so...
I have a couple of comments. I haven't been on that indoor tour, and you asked me to do it, I did. It was interesting for me. When I, it was all, I was kind of in a rush, and I, you know, I had to digest it for a day before I kind of really realized how I felt about it. I called John a couple of days afterwards, and I told him, you know, that I can really see how the neighbors feel, some hesitation about this project, because you're trying to put a lot into this building, and it just seems like I'm not sure it's going to hold at all. If they're actually going to use two rooms for an apartment, to me, that seemed like they weren't going to be, eventually, it was going to be a development that wasn't going to attract ordinary people to come, because they were going to be so small and so limited. And he assured me that they're still working on it. Actually, I spoke to Jim Bellwub as well, and he assured me even more, that they are very open to, you know, not just sticking with, jamming 19 very, very small apartments in there, which made me feel better. Also, I felt, you know, I understand the neighbors who are on the east of the property, you know, are uncomfortable with that eastern area being used for anything, but, you know, if it's a development being made for children and that planned area for a playground is like 15 feet, that goes down into ravine right after it, it just, it was sort of, you know, are you trying to fit something here that doesn't quite fit? But anyway, ultimately, so I did have this conversation with them, I did have these doubts. It's not enough for me to vote no at this point. They really did, I felt like it was more important to get some connection with them and get some commitment at this point, when there was, before we've all approved it, you know? And so they did personally tell me that they're really committed to making this place really nice and really livable, and that it would be a benefit to the community, so that's all I have to say.
Have we received anything else? That's it all?
No, we have not, your honor.
Okay, then we'll open up the public hearing. For those who would like to comment additionally, the only thing, since the last meeting, and I did visit the property again myself as well, and do appreciate particularly on Taylor, how, you know, that quiet nature of the neighborhood would definitely change in that regard. But there was some discussion, and Paul, maybe you can address this, because you and I spoke about it, that Mr. Cooster had mentioned something about pursuing Section 8 housing for that. I mean, is that... Okay, I'll talk, let me talk to Paul, and if you could maybe discuss what your conversation was and whether that changes the picture, because that had not come up in the past.
Like I said, it happened after the meeting, and it was just kind of, John and I were talking, my wife was sitting so she could hear the conversation. I guess I wasn't really paying attention to who else was there, but John said that, you know, that he was going to pursue the Section 8 because of the workers already qualified that worker, Sonny Brook and stuff. So, you know, he told me he could get more rent that way, like charge more rent by doing Section 8. And I don't really know Section 8, so I would like a description of what really that is, because...
Logan Apartments that the city owns is Section 8 housing.
Right.
Section 8 program, Section 8. It is HUD program.
So it's low-income housing, and there are elements that you need to qualify for to meet that demand, and I think it does, I think the only, the interesting thing is it could weigh into the argument about who it might attract, because there's, you know, there's been some discussion about outside of their employees attracting someone who could afford, you know, a higher level of rent. And that the subsidies would be coming from within their company as opposed to outside from within the government.
Right.
But John unfortunately is not here to answer whether that's the case or not, so I don't know what to say about that, but it was the one new piece of information that did come up in the last two weeks. Okay. Anything else, Paul?
Well, I spent a lot of time up at the courthouse last Friday, and I was really looking at records and seeing if I could find a deed, record of the sale for John or the group of investors. And the only thing I really could find was this Regional Assets REO LLC out of Tampa, which was sold in June of last year, 2012. So, you know, I could see on, that Maplewood owns the parking lots, you know, they turned the house, and a couple of lots already that came with that, they sold. I saw where one of our neighbors had bought a lot from them, and I saw it was John Cooster owning a couple of lots to the west of the building. Yeah, they're all, they don't have an explanation for it.
Okay. In other words, if you asked them right now, who owns the property, they couldn't tell you who owned the property?
Well, I just printed out today from the assessors and it shows REO, it still shows that I'm owning that.
And that could be their LLC?
Yeah, I'm assuming that. I'm assuming that that's the LLC. John Cooster has always been represented.
Well, it says Maplewood LLC on the parking lot, so.
Well, I mean, Maplewood LLC may be a development company, may be contracting with another LLC to actually do the development, but the owner was always represented as John Cooster is the principal of the owners.
Did they purchase it in June of last year, though?
I'm not, I'm not sure, but John is.
I'm just saying it's not showing.
Is the principal, as far as I know, of the ownership cadre.
Do you know anything, Tracy?
No, no, I don't. I was assuming, as Kevin did, that they are the owner of record.
Yeah, now, they may be, they may own together more than one LLC. I used to have five of them. I mean, you can own more than one.
Right, I'm just trying to.
With different focus and function, you know, for each one, maybe one's a development company, one's an investment company, you know, one's a property ownership or rental company. I guess that's what I meant.
Well, I just think.
The place where you search, the place where you search for LLCs would be the Secretary of State's.
Exactly, it would be. Most current list of it, John's right, would be at the Secretary of State's.
Can I clarify, because I did the same thing, that it was a little further back? The owner of record is called Regional REO Assets LLC, and they're in Tampa, Florida. That's the owner of record for the building. And that's the owner of record in the recorder's office, the treasurer's office, the assessor's office. So, Paul's point is, how can you pass an ordinance, or wouldn't it actually be unlawful to pass an ordinance approving rezoning for Mr. Cooster's develop, you know, development company if they're not the owner of record?
If, is it possible, is it possible that they have a, that that is the owner right now, that was the last owner of the Nelson property, or they, and that Cooster has a separate LLC, a separate contract, a private contract with them?
Was it saying Regional? I think it says the same thing.
It was turned by someplace out of Omaha, I believe, is what it says.
Many things are possible. It's possible that Mr. Cooster bought the whole LLC itself and all that it owned.
No, no, Regional REO is their, what do you call it, when they buy short sales and things like that?
I was just talking in theoreticals.
But no, I mean, I'm just saying, nobody at the courthouse has any record of any owner other, for the building, other than Regional REO Assets LLC of Tampa, Florida.
Well, we can certainly clarify that.
I'm going to invite our city attorney up to address that question, Jennifer, as to whether, if you can, we can rezone.
I'm just trying to imagine what could be the case. I've done no research on this, but you could have an LLC, any state in the United States own the property here. We have corporations in this town that also have incorporating documents in Delaware, probably Delaware's the most frequently used state in the United States. But having a Florida corporation own a piece of property here for one reason or another, there wouldn't be anything illegal about that. As far as who's on our application, if it's individuals that have signed it, probably they ought to explain what it is that their entity holds, and, I mean, that's a legitimate question.
It is.
So, but you find out where those entities are, or whether they're registered to do business in Iowa by checking the website for the Secretary of State, and they'll have everything on LLCs, corporations, LLPs and so forth. If they're either an out-of-state entity that has applied for authority to exist in the state of Iowa, that'll be there. Or if they have limited purpose recognition from the Secretary of State, they can do that. There are several things there that, until you actually see if they show up online, you're not going to know what they are set up to be. So, probably this means, we'll take a look-see tomorrow as far as what they are on the website.
Just, I quickly looked on Florida's Secretary of State. There is a Florida Regional REO Assets LLC. It said it was active, principal address is in Tampa, Florida. Registered agent name and address is Kent Davis of Brandon, Florida. Manager and member, Kent Davis, title manager, Charles Bates, Sturgis, Mississippi. So.
I'd like to see something that shows they're either registered to do business in the state of Iowa, or they have some member here.
Well, I just, can, whose name is on the application at this point in time? Is it John Cooster?
John Cooster.
Okay. I'm just going to, I'm going to recommend that we just table this reading until we, until we get this sorted out.
I will, I can get ahold of John tomorrow and I'll confirm all this and get it sorted out, and I'll have it out in the email by the end of the day, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so entertain a motion then. I'm going to close, any other comments before we, yes?
Hi, I'm Gail Thomas. I just had a comment that, an issue that has repeatedly come up with this project is that low-income people, or section eight, or people who are not ordinary, as Mr. Revolinsky pointed out, may change the flavor of the neighborhood. I don't have my exact figures with me, but the median income of the city of Fairfield is approximately like $48,000 a year. Low income is considered 80% of median income, so you could potentially earn $36,000 a year and still fall into that low-income category. I think something that has happened in wages over the last couple of decades has created a situation where many, many hard-working people who would otherwise have been considered average mainstream Americans are now being financially forced into this low-income category, which carries a negative social stigma. So, I just wanted to point out that a person making $36,000 in the city of Fairfield very likely would qualify for low-income services, that's all.
Thank you for your comment. I'm not sure that the median is that high, but I think your point is well-taken, and certainly, you know, our deliberation shouldn't be discriminatory. The only reason we bring it up is because the residents have, that's one of the concerns that they share, so it's one of the things that they're wrestling with, with the owners of the property, but thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments before we close the public hearing? Then we'll close, close the public hearing and at this time entertain a motion to table this second reading.
Move to table.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Budge Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next council, in Mayor's report, I have several appointments and reappointments for our boards, commissions, actually, most of them are reappointments. But this time, I'd like to recommend for reappointment, I can give you this joint, Ed Colani for Board of Adjustment, Jim Anderson for Airport Board, Terry Delker, Park and Rec Board, Brad Johnson, Civil Service Board, Sandy Gillespie, Marcia Gaines, and Don Cummings for Logan Apartment Board. And the new appointment will be Margaret Kelly for the Library Board. So, entertain a motion to approve those reappointments and the appointment of Margaret Kelly to the Library Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Also, just wanted to report that Saturday, we did have our kickoff event for the Iowa Blue Zones Project. We're happy to kind of get that off and running, which means that we have completed the written portion of our strategic plan called the Blueprint. So, we have all of the, we have plans for each of the different areas of community policy, schools, work sites, individual pledge items, and we're going to be working probably over the next 18 months to complete all of these different pledge items so that we will receive the full certification as a Blue Zone. So, we're actually beginning a new phase of the process, but we won't be complete until we accomplish all of these certifications. We were able to have a very nice event at the Sonheim at 10:00 AM. We had Dr. Marionette Miller Meeks give her keynote address, and she was very inspired about what Fairfield has accomplished thus far. We also watched about a 15-minute video of Tony, of Dan Butner, who had, was the author and also the concealer of this community Blue Zones Project, and it was very, very inspiring. We'll try and get that on FPEC, I'll talk to Jason about that, but you really get a sense of what was learned by these five cultures from around the world and how significant it can be overlaid on community life. So, we really look forward to sharing that and accomplishing a lot of these goals. Next stop, Ragbri on Friday, so we'll have the report from Michael at the end, but I know, I want to thank everyone on our city staff who've been working very, very hard the last couple of months to get us prepared. Darrell, Chief Harvey, and Pam Craft, and many, many more who've really been working hard. So, thank you so much in preparation, and I think we're going to have a really great event that everyone's very, very excited about. That's all for my report. We'll move then to a Ways and Means Committee Report for.
Yes. We did meet on July 11th, and we considered, among other things, the ambulance committee request that the city participate in helping support the ambulance. We didn't make any decisions. We are going to meet again on Wednesday to discuss it further, but I just want to give a heads up to the council what the issues are, what we're looking at. As I said in the meeting minutes here, the operation has a projected yearly deficit of $35,000 for the coming year, not including work that's done, that's needed on ambulances, as well as there's new ambulance or ambulances needed. So, there's quite a significant need there. In the past, the city did contribute $25,000 a year towards the ambulance. We stopped giving it when we started giving instead in-kind rent, in-kind use of the law center, former Law Center offices, and then in the fire department for housing the ambulance. Ambulance service outgrew those facilities and they moved on, but we didn't offer again anything else. And so, it's just been hanging ever since that, well, why don't we contribute? I mean, it's a good argument, it makes sense. I'm not sure, you know, we've already done our budget, where are we going to get the money if we're going to contribute that much for the upcoming year? That's an issue. But we felt to just step back for a minute and say, well, you know, because there's this argument that's always made, because there is a levy that's, that people pay on their taxes for ambulance. In addition, you know, the county residents are putting in an extra amount, the county supervisors are putting in, I believe, is it 25?
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. And so, you know, because there's a shortfall, and so, there's a, well, the city residents are also county residents, and so, you know, we're already paying that through the county as well. So, there's this kind of fairness issue. What we felt would be a nice idea is just to give some perspective on it. What do other communities around Iowa do? I mean, is this a common thing that the ambulance levy does not cover the full expenses for an ambulance? If so, well, how do they make them up? I'd like to just see some perspective and to know that we're not the only silly city putting in money on it, whereas, you know, or whatever. I just, it would give us a little bit of better perspective, and so, that's what we're hoping to hear from Kevin.
Well, the only other, the only issue on that, because I was able to meet with Martha, who is our representative, and with Deb Carden from the hospital, and, you know, we have a contract right now that we're a part of, and we have some responsibility to that contract. So, the expenses that are required right now for the current contract we have with this ambulance company is what's gotten us into this situation, but we are in contract. So, we have to find some resolution. Last time we had this discussion, we did talk about possibly the, you know, the hospital taking over the ambulance service, and from our discussions with Deb Carden and her discussions with her board, there is some favorability towards that in the future, but at this point in time, we have a contract that goes for another four years. So, that's not likely to change in that period of time, so we have to determine, and I agree, our budget is set, John, so we, if we're going to find something, it may not be a full $25,000, but it should be something to show that we are, you know, we understand our responsibility to our contract.
I think that's reasonable position, and I think the committee just felt overall in the long term, we are committed to this 2080 agreement until, I believe, 2016. So, it's only actually three more years, maybe less, two and a half years. But in any event, just to get some perspective for the long term, and then maybe make it a little easier for us to come up with our share right now, but we wanted to just do that before we went ahead and made a recommendation to council. I believe a recommendation will be forthcoming at our next meeting.
I have one comment. We have a contract, but we also had a contract before with the last people, and there was a bid for the new contract, and the people that bid for the new contract were way under the old contract, and the old people said, you can't do it for that, we've run it, we know, you can't do it for that. So, if they'd bid it for that price, why now? Is there more money needed for that service?
It's ambulance question.
Well, actually, it's not a case, it's a case somewhat of that, although we're also running into major problems with the condition of the ambulances, which we took, they took from our prior, you know, provider. And, I mean, just, I had a call, a phone call from, you know, the hospital the other day that, you know, we had an additional $4,000 repair on the oldest ambulance, and the ambulances are in very marginal condition. I know they're very concerned, frankly, about, and hopefully are going to bring in some additional vehicles because of Ragbri coming to Fairfield, because I think they're very apprehensive that our three ambulances are in suitable condition for the number of people that we're going to have in this community. And so, it's not all a case, frankly, I mean, everyone's having trouble with this health insurance situation, Tony. That's, I think, one of the other big problems is, and that's one of the reasons the hospital is very apprehensive about saying they would be interested in assuming the ambulance service because, you know, right now, with Obamacare and everything else, there's a lot of big questions yet as to who's paying for what. And that's part of the problem that the ambulance providers are running into as far as their costs are concerned. We have a number of people who, you know, don't have any insurance, and, you know, when they, they don't ask an individual, do you have insurance? They pick them up regardless of what, I mean, after all. And yet, sometimes they're left holding the, you know, bill for that individual, and so, it's not a money-making proposition, that's for sure. It's very concerning, and I think it's, you know, I think it's a concern that every community is facing. I don't think we're alone, but it will be interesting what Kevin is able to find in terms of, you know, those expenses.
And there in other towns also, the same problem in other towns, this service that they're, I mean, they're having problems, every town?
That's what we're trying to research.
Right.
And is it typical?
They serve four or five of the places, right?
Oh, I see.
And I don't know.
This company actually is out of Grinnell, and they are, you know, the Grinnell Hospital is totally independent. I mean, this is, they also operate, I think it's out of Urbandale as well. I mean, they have actually, Grinnell, Fairfield, and Urbandale. I mean, they had the other two, and then we signed on with them. We actually saved a considerable amount of money by going with them rather than going with the other providers. When those contracts were offered to the board, we really didn't have a lot of choice. I mean, we chose the least expensive of the two operators.
The big thing that we came up with in the subcommittee meeting was, how is everybody else doing it, kind of question? You know, how are cities of 10,000, you know, roughly, in the state doing it? And you see them doing it a lot of different ways. The hospital runs it all by themselves. The hospital runs it all by themselves. Privates run it, privatized hospital, everything's privatized. Or, you know, you see twenty-eighty or two out there as well. And I think, you know, a few of us were saying some things in the meeting. It was like, well, you know what, let's see what everybody's doing. Let's see what the predominant form of this service delivery is in the state, at least in this state.
But going in before we signed this contract, was there a budget that we had committed to, that our portion of?
Yes.
I think, I think what happened was, I don't know that we did. I mean, I think that there was still kind of a little bit of, that was dangling, that there were, there was some hope and anticipation that Fairfield would make an additional contribution above and beyond the levy. And we haven't. But I think one of the things, Tony, is the, and I don't know what's in the contract regarding vehicles, but I know that there was a, there was a large expenditure on a new vehicle that was needed that, and I don't know what, how that is, how that reads in the contract. I don't think their operational budget is higher per se, but this capital investment in a new vehicle is what's putting the strain on them.
But without putting a finger on a statistic, I'll bet you money right now that the ambulance levy for no hospital does it cover in the state the cost. Because the levy is like any other levy, our eight-ten. Does our eight-ten cover, I mean, our eight-ten has been there, our eight dollars and ten cents for a general fund's been in existence since that airport levy, probably nineteen sixty-two?
Right.
What was it dollar worth in nineteen sixty-two? So I doubt any of them.
The levies are not adequate at all when it comes to expenses.
That's right. They have, but on a relative level, you still see a suffering dollar at the end of the road for the service delivery point.
And, and the big thing of that is that, you know, our discussions were one thing when they started off, but we are in an agreement, and the county is sticking to that agreement. We kind of have to stick to the agreement. I get what you're saying, where you're coming from, though, and I think that's, it's a legitimate question to ask, because we were sitting there. But at this point, you know, we are studying what everybody else is doing, just so that we know. But I think the big point is we are dedicated in a way. We have to cover that for this year's operations. We have to come up with some sort of plan. I recommended at our council, at our subcommittee meeting, that we go to our contractor and say, hey, what is a, what is a contract amendment that has you taking care of vehicles? What does that look like?
Because we need to know what that looks like.
And is that typical that the twenty-eighty owns the vehicles instead of, I mean...
It's typical, in many cases, twenty-eightys will own facilities and equipment, yes, but in the sense of ambulances, I have never heard of it. Never heard of it.
So that's odd for us, is what you're saying.
It is, I think it's odd in general for the market, because ambulances have a long lived life.
Well, you could construct a twenty-eighty agreement in any way that you want.
And then, yeah.
So that, that, it can be done that way or not.
It can fit any situation, I mean, it was right.
I think Tony's question is a really important one, and, you know, what's interesting is that the ambulance committee is happening to meet on Wednesday at one-thirty. We're, at Wednesday at three-thirty, we're having our Ways and Means meeting. So maybe, Martha, you could, you could ask Tony's question for us and maybe come back with...
Well, I think, I think the questions are important, but I also think that...
I think I know the answer.
There's a deficit, and we need to, we need to determine whether we're going to be helping to manage that or not.
Well, and it is important, too, that our contractor has other contracts, that they do provide the vehicle and equipment for those, you know? And so, I mean, he made a comment at one of our meetings, well, we, you know, because we were laboring over the ambulance costing a hundred fifty thousand, brand new, they probably would, of course, there's a big used market for that. But he made the comment that, well, I got one for twenty-five thousand dollars ago, and we're all just, I mean, the air kind of went out of there. It was like, well, maybe we need to look at, you know, because he's going to run into deals, he's going to know more of what his market is for his equipment, his machinery. I think that's not a bad concept. We need to know the number regardless of where we go, because one way or the other, we've got two ambulances that are marginal, I think, was a really great, nice way of putting that.
The third ambulance is really basically hardly runnable.
Hurting is one of them.
And I understand that. And I understand we saved a lot of money for the lower contract bid. Was that a ploy to get the bid then raise it up later by saying, I need more money? I mean, is it still going to be lower than the original contract bid?
That's the legitimate question.
I just don't understand how you get a contract and then raise it up during the contract.
Right.
I think that's...
We thought we signed a contract that was going to match our budget, and now it's not. It's, we're running in the red Y.
Right.
A contract is supposed to be something that paints you into a corner.
Isn't what, isn't what you're saying, Martha, though, that part of this additional cost is for these ambulances that we own, so that's not necessarily part of the contractor's agreement?
No, the overage, no. The overage was...
What we own and our operational expenses, so to speak.
The overage is operational, though. Thirty-five thousand, we're talking about, has nothing to do with vehicular purchases.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's operational. Which the other guy, I, you know, from memory, I'm going to say the broadcast was already fifteen or twenty, and it was rosy because it was early, you know, before, before we even did the bid out. So, I mean, it's, I think it's a great point, it's a great question you're asking, but it's also tough to pin a long nail to that donkey, because, I mean, there was already a projection, early projection of over, you know, we knew it was going to happen. And it was early, so it was less...
Well, and actually, the contract, the first year of the contract, really, we only signed it in, I think, October, September, October. So, I mean, we're just now coming up to the first year. So I think your comment or your question regarding, you know, if we have two more years, when it's a three-year contract, you know, what's going to happen in the future? I mean, if we help cover this one shortage this time, is it going to be worse next year? Or what's going to happen then?
I'm convinced if we start subsidizing, then like all subsidies, it's going to go up.
I'm going to just end this discussion at this point, and the ambulance committee will meet when, Martha?
Wednesday at one-thirty.
Wednesday, one o'clock. Invite any council members who would like to attend that. And where is that meeting being held?
Then Ways and Means won't be meeting until after the ambulance meeting, so...
But the ambulance meeting is where, Martha?
It's at the hospital, in the boardroom at the hospital. One-thirty at the boardroom in the hospital.
All right. Thanks for your report, John. We'll move on to a report from Water and Sew Utilities. We have some posters from Shoretown.
I'd like to, I'd like to start this by thanking the other two committee members. They've been, they've been subject to baptism by fire with this issue, both of whom are very new council members, and both of whom have been able to grasp this subject very, very quickly. I handed out some information to the council people here that is also shown on these boards that Kevin is putting up in front of us. And this is the Sanitary Transportation Overflow Elimination Program, or STEP program, which is what we are proposing to do over the next seven years in order to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows here in the city of Fairfield. The first year of this program, you'll see an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet here in front of you, which is also on the bigger aerial view map that we have in front of us that shows our treatment facility. And the proposal for the treatment facility is to rebuild the headworks, which is number one on here. That's probably one of the largest first portions at the treatment facility. And then we also need to build a twenty-million-gallon flow equalization basin at the facility, which is basically a large overflow pond. And what that will be able to do for us is increase safety at the plant with the new headworks. Currently, our employees go into a pit or a confined space, and they clean off what they call a bar grit screen with rakes by hand in order to get materials out so that we can get the water through and process it. The equalization basin will take heavy rains that infiltrate into our system and put them into a basin so that they can be run through our plant at a slower rate once the rains have subsided. So I don't see the number here on, on this sheet, Kevin, for the amount of money at the plant. I believe that was...
Fifteen-point-three million.
Fifteen-point-three million dollars.
Larger map.
The estimate. And, yeah, that is on, on this map you see here. It's the same map that we have in front of the audience as well. Along with that, in the first year for Step One, the transmission line, the sewer line that runs from Lambs and Woods down to the headworks would be included in that. And that is a four-point-one-million-dollar project. The size of the line that runs from there is inadequate for handling the, the water that comes through the system. The hydrology is being worked up by French Rennicker and Associates. The plant work is being done by McClure and Associates. I also would like to talk about the, what is shown as Step Three on this map as well. It's our force main system from the Grease Lightning Lift Station across to what we commonly call Congress Field. And that in itself is a six-point-six-million-dollar project. It's upsizing the line so that we don't have a bottleneck back at Grease Lightning Lift Over the, over the course of the first year, if you look at this diagram in the packet that I handed out, it will show you what the rate increase for the sewer would need to be for that fiscal year thirteen. And we're proposing that it be a twenty percent increase in rate right now for sewer, which would be five dollars and fifty-nine cents per month. It's a lot. In the article that I had in the ledger and also in the Weekly Reader, I tried to explain that over many years, we enjoyed extremely low rates for sewer here in the city. What happened is, is we were unable to keep up with the maintenance, we were unable to keep up with just repairs in general that you would normally do with any, any enterprise fund. And we had a large increase in two thousand and nine to try to keep the sewer fund from going into default, because our funds were just negative balances at that point. And it is against Iowa code to carry a negative balance in any fund that you have. And it took a while to get that built back up. But also in that article, I also explained what we've done with that money to this point with those three increases that I helped propose and helped pass. And that money is no longer adequate to do what we need to do. We need this increase in order to continue to fulfill our promises to the Iowa DNR and the EPA that we will eliminate sanitary sewer overflows here in the city of Fairfield. And it was the recommendation of the committee after, after reviewing this, three times, I believe, we talked with both of our engineering firms about this, in order to be able to recommend to the full council that we move forward with restructuring our rates and rewriting our sewer code, which is Chapter Thirteen. And we also will look at Chapter Fourteen, our water code, at the same time. We, we would like to be able to have at least one more town hall meeting in a location that's large enough to accommodate as many people as we can possibly have come. I know that this is, this is a large undertaking. We have capability of being able to show as a line item on our utility bill monthly under the caption STEP, how much money is going to that and how the fund is generating the money in order to repay money that we're going to need to borrow from the state revolving fund in order to do this. And as we learned earlier this evening, the interest rate is lower now than it has ever been. That fund is very strong. It will allow us to be able to pay off the notes without having the interest rate that we had previously. We will also be able to work with the Sierra Club in order to do some ecological-type projects along Crow Creek to help clean it up and try to improve the environment around it. This is, this has been a long and arduous amount of work. I worked on this a very long time.
You're not done, Darren.
And I'm nowhere, I'm nowhere near being done.
And we appreciate the work you've put into your committee.
I'm nowhere near being done, but this is something, this is something that, that when I initially began to look at this nine years ago, I had no clue that we were in as dire a situation as what we are. And with our administrative orders still hanging right over top of our necks, ready to chop our heads off at any time, with fines that have been levied against us since nineteen eighty-five that they have not enforced collecting from us, it's my opinion that I would rather see our money go to improving our environment than to paying fines. And if we don't follow through with this, that's what will happen, is we will pay fines, and we won't be able to improve our environment. So the next phase for our committee is we're going to begin looking into, like I said, restructuring the rates and the ordinances, and then having everything completed, hopefully, by our billing period that begins the first of October.
Thanks, Aaron. This, I don't think any of us under, really understood years ago what we would be getting into. And given the amount of work that we've done over the last four or five years, which has been significant, but really just scratching the surface, we're really getting now to some of the meat that's been in this. And it's essentially, it's an overhaul. It's almost an entire overhaul of our sanitary sewer system. And those, that is going to be significant, but it is also something that is the fiduciary responsibility of the city in terms of running these services for hundreds of years to come. So it's something we have to do at this point.
It's as large an undertaking as when the sanitary sewer was created back in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds here in the city. And it's probably the largest municipal program that any city can undertake at any point. The situation that we run into is, is that the size of our community, the demographic, and the median income average that we have, we don't qualify for many of the grants that may be out there. We talked a little bit about CDBG grants, community block grant developments. While you may be able to do one or two specific spot locations because of the income in that area, it's not a large enough program that would do the whole dynamic of what we're looking at and what we're faced with. I know that it can look very overwhelming at this point, you know? We have sections that John was asking me earlier about the big blue section there on the northeast corner of town. A lot of that is, it's a two sewer main system that runs out along the northeast corner of our city. One leg is a hundred and ten years old, another leg is ninety years old. And at that time, there wasn't any easements that were purchased along with it. So we'll need to go through the process of trying to obtain easements for putting in a new line, single line, that will carry all of the material that comes down through there at this point in time. There's a lot of hydrology work that goes into it. I'm glad that we have French Rennicker on our side when it comes to being able to do this design. I think they'll be very thorough with what they do. Our plant, it's in various ages out there. We have some stuff that we just completed with the sludge storage tank to things that have been in place and have been put back together with baling wires since nineteen sixty-five. So it's, you have to look at this in two different directions. Our plant and the condition that we have it in right now, we believe is salvageable, and we won't have to construct an entirely new plant like other communities have. A new sewage treatment plant... A new sewage treatment plant that was just recently built in a neighboring community ran in the neighborhood of $42 million in itself. And it still didn't eliminate sanitary sewer overflows to the amount that it was projected it would. And with the combination of doing things at our plant and our transmission lines, transmission system coming to the plant, I think we're going to get a better value for our dollar, because we're looking at a number that is still $40 million. But we're not putting it all in one basket, and we're not hoping that that one basket will carry what we need it to carry.
Good point. Darren, thanks for your presentation. And I realize that the reason we need this at this point in time is that the next step is to consider the fee structure so that we can begin this work. So appreciate the information that you've put together. We will be going through an ordinance process, obviously, for those changes that would be giving us an opportunity in three public hearings to go over this for the public. But if there is something else that you'd like to do, we, at City Hall, obviously, we'd be happy to help you set that up for your committee.
I'd like to just add something, too, that, as Darren mentioned, I kind of came late to the party on this with just starting on it this year. And it's a huge deal, and it's a huge thing to kind of get your head around what's going on. But I have been very impressed with not only Darren, but the team of Sean and French Reniker and McClure and Kevin working on this project. It's, we're very, I'm very grateful to have Darren as leader on this project with the city, because with his skill set and seeing it through so many administrators and different personnel changes and things, it is, it's a huge deal. And the city should be very grateful to have him as leader on this project, so...
Thank you, Jessica. Yes, we absolutely are, no question about it. Thank you. Anything else, Darren?
No, I think I've overwhelmed you enough at this point.
All right. So the final point of business then will be our RagBri report. Michael?
I'd just like to remind people, there's been a little bit of pushback from the community now that we've announced road closures. Why are we closing our city streets to our own citizens? Why are we closing city parks to our own citizens? Just a reminder, this is part of our whole economic development through tourism. It's the same reason we have a hotel-motel tax and a visitors bureau. It's good for our local economy to invite people from out of town to spend their money here. And this event will be the biggest tourism event we've ever had, ever, because of the growing number of people coming through. So they're spending their money at our local hotels, at our gas stations, at our grocery stores, at our restaurants, at all our boutiques. And that's good for everyone. So that's the reason for the following information, which is kind of a pill to swallow, but there are going to be some road closures that day. I'll just read the list. Grimes Avenue will be closed from 32nd to Sixth Street, Sixth Street from Grimes to Fillmore. Briggs Avenue from Sixth to D. D Street from Briggs to Broadway. Broadway from D to Park. And Burlington from Main to B. The downtown square will be closed off in a two-block from the actual square on Thursday night to accommodate the vendors, Beverage Garden, all the porta-potties, et cetera. All the city parks will be closed Friday. We're using those for the campers. And we just advise everyone, if you need anything, medicine, food, please do it before Friday. Go out and get it before Friday. Friday will be very, very difficult to get around town. It'll be extremely crowded. Recommend, join the fun, ride your bike if you can. The good news, just like when anyone has guests, you spruce up a little bit before they come. So our town is looking really good. The beautification committee's been busy. Volunteers have been busy cleaning up, sprucing up. And I was also able to finally get BNSF to help with our pedestrian crossings. After a quiet zone, it was something I was working with them on, and they kept dragging their feet. And I told them, we have 25,000 people coming in late July, and that got their attention. So if you notice, they've got the railroad ties, and they just today put in the asphalt. So city crews won't be able to get around to this until after RagBri. But we will extend the sidewalks so that every railroad crossing in town has a pedestrian crossing so that people with baby strollers, if you're riding your bike, or just whatever, if you're in a wheelchair, you don't need to come into the street anymore. You can get across the tracks safely outside of the street lanes. So again, that's like one of those little extra benefits. Had we not had RagBri, I can't tell you when BNSF would have finally got around to doing this. So it's good news.
We use that sense of urgency. That's great.
Yeah, well, they're going to also slow their train speed down to 25 miles per hour for that day instead of their standard 45-plus. So they're trying to be cognizant about the safety issue of having that many people.
And I think they're going to slow it down from 9:00 in the morning on the Friday until 1:00 a.m. that night meant to call me right before the meeting. The other thing, in addition to where the bikes are going, we have to accommodate all the support vehicles coming in. There's a big concern about the area of Penn School, Obie Nelson, for the people that live down in Darren's neighborhood and over there on Taylor and Tyler and stuff like that. We have almost 5,000 campers in Penn's middle school, Obie, and we have to get their support vehicles in here. Coming in off 212 exit on North, on Main Street, we have them splitting off, going down Fillmore, going into those areas, going down to Lambs and Woods, continuing down on South Main, going to Madison, into Washington School, and then working their way over to Chicago Park. So in addition to just the bikers, we have to accommodate, you know, the extra support vehicles. So is it going to come, you know? It's going to take a while for everybody to get along, or get around, you know? Just give yourself some extra time. If people have appointments, they absolutely have to make it to. Call my department. We'll work on how to get you guys out of your houses if you have to do that. We've made some accommodations with some of the businesses that are still working in the areas that we've shut down the roads. So we'll do as much as we can for you.
Thanks, Chief. Now, a lot of the support vehicles, we're going to start seeing at 9:00, probably at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock.
They actually have said some of them will come in. I know Pam's got a couple in Obie Nelson that are coming in at like 2:00 in the morning. So they're saying from probably 8-ish until 1:00, we're going to be inundated with support vehicles. And then from probably about 8:00, we're going to get the early riders in. And till about 2:00, it's going to probably 8 to 2, 10 to 2, it's going to be the busy time for the bikers. You know, at some point, we have the new car computer system so we can keep track of the state troopers, and we know which one's the end vehicle. If we can get those roads open any sooner than we can, we would love not to direct traffic for 12 hours. So we'll do that as quickly as we can.
Great. Well, thanks, Michael. It's, I think we are, we're as prepared as we're going to be, and I think it'll be over in the blink of an eye. So hopefully, everything goes smoothly. All right. If there isn't any other, Connie?
I'd just like to, based, not that you need more statistics, but Gail Thomas gave us a statistic, and Darren also mentioned median income. So I just thought, I looked it up on the Census Bureau. There's quick facts, and I just find it kind of interesting. So median household income is almost $48,000. So obviously, there might be more than one income generator. Per capita money income, this is in $2,011, is a little over $25,000, okay? So there's the difference there. But this is also what I find interesting. Persons below poverty level in Jefferson County is 13%. Statewide, it's almost 12%. However, couple this with, high school graduates in Jefferson County are almost 93%. State average is 90%. And a bachelor's degree or higher, we have 30% of our population. The statewide is almost 25%. So higher degrees we have, but we have more poverty than the state average. So we have some work to do. You know what they are. It's interesting.
Okay. Any other visits for the council? Now, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rev. Valinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.